Thank you. All right, we're going to get started. Would everyone rise?
That's my lead. Justice of the United States of America and to the Republican Public Affairs Chair, one agent under God, beautiful, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. We have four councilors present and over staff here as well. My first order of business before we drop the council meeting, we have a couple of motions that you've been made. The first one this week is National Police Week. And so in accordance with Administrative Code Article One, Sections Three through Seventeen, Rules of the Council, we request to temporarily, I'm going to make a motion to temporarily suspend Rule K of the same code to add the police department recognition for now. Please wait for our agenda later on, under new business, under, sorry, under new, right after signing the term. Did you get that? So.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm the emotion the second. Those favor, just, aye, John.
Aye.
Aye.
I can motion back to the simple hero. And so the police week recognition will not have that there signing a term of mine. And then.
Madam Chair motion to swap the reports and presentations from SMPDC with Reagan and the oath point presentation where Reagan's report consists of one hundred and twenty-two pages. It might run a little bit longer. We don't want to keep either here any longer than.
Thank you. All those favor of moving that item up ahead of. Aye, John.
Aye.
Let us, aye. Motion. Thank you.
I'm sure, sorry, we can't hear you.
Yes, it's because the air conditioning. Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Just raise your hand if that's a problem again. Um, all right. Next, our business approval minimum end from April twenty-third. Any edits from anybody unknown?
Madam Chair, I move we accept the town council meeting minutes, maybe the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as written.
Second. Thank you. A motion, second, and discussion. Those favor say aye, just get aye, John.
Aye.
Let us, aye. Aye, motion passes. And next, we have a treasurer's warrant. I don't have to.
I got.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move you sign the treasurer's warrant dated five nine two thousand twenty-four. Any amount of, it's a long one, one million, one million six thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second. I second. But we will pay it. Uh, do you have enough?
Uh, school payment is seven hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars basis.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion on warrant? All those favor of signing your warrant, say aye, Madam Chair.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Let us, aye. Aye, motion passes for there. All right. Um, so up next, we're moving on our current presentation and given our reshuffling. Peter, it's your turn. Oh, wait, what did I miss? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry. Um, I'm going to go ahead. Thank you. Uh, so again, this week is Police Recognition Week. And a proclamation here, we have an award to give to the chief and the lieutenant. Uh, thank you all for coming this evening. Um, so today we want to recognize National Police Week of two thousand twenty-four and the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there were more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the South River Police Department. Whereas since the first reported death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently twenty-four thousand sixty-seven law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifices and have been killed in the line of duty, including ninety-eight law enforcement officers in name. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas two hundred and eighty-two names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Disgrace, including a hundred and eighteen officers killed in two thousand twenty-three and a hundred and sixty-four officers killed in the previous years. Whereas the service and the sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-six candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May tenth through May sixteenth, which is the week. Whereas May fifteenth is designated, is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be blown and asked set. Therefore, be it resolved that the South River County Council will observe May tenth through sixteenth as National Police Week in the town of South River and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you all. Thank you for here. Thank you. Well, the officers.
So we have an award of appreciation presented to the South River Police Department for National Police Week two thousand twenty-four. Presented to the South River Police Department in recognition for your professional and dedicated service for going above and beyond serving and protecting our citizens and community every day. Thank you all for your service. Now, South River, May, May fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in. Thank you for your service. Um, okay, now, Peter, sorry about that.
That's kind of hard to follow.
Um, while we're doing technical issues, um, this is Peter McCollum, who's been working with us to come up with a design for our central renovation for the building, and we've been. And at the end of the week.
Yes, so hello. Um, so just a quick summary where we are. We're wrapping up the information gathering stage. We had electrical engineers last week, mechanical is coming this week. And the last will be doing a building envelope survey to look at the exterior and the windows. Like Meller just mentioned, we've been meeting with the staff to discuss some beginning concept layouts. Um, and we will do so again tomorrow. Um, we do that on a semi-weekly basis. And then, um, so that's where we are. We're developing concepts, information gathering. We're still on schedule to sort of have a concept plan and estimate by mid-June with a draft report mid-July. A final report at the end of July, mid-August. So the schedule will be adjusted as, as we still need to gather information and through our discussions with the town manager and their staff. We want to give you a report in a timely manner, but we don't want to rush it just to get it to. Again, we're at the beginning stages. Things are going to start to move quicker now with some pictures and stuffs. Any questions?
I'll add, I joined, um, openly, it's what, two weeks ago now? And one, it was super fun. I really enjoyed it. Um, the playing with the, the design, but, um, I think we're really on a path where trying to kind of figure out a box and not moving and what I keep calling the expensive wall. And, you know, trying to come up with ways to kind of do what we need to do and not touching some of the things that need to be updated.
Yes, exactly.
So it's going.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Um, public comment, anyone want to make any comments? Geez, I'm sorry. I'm all screwed up this evening. It's quite different from when it started, which is, it's okay. Um, that's what you need. Um, it is now your turn. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Wonderful. These things always happen, right? Um, hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Reagan Young. I have worked for Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission, and I've been sort of the lead on the comprehensive plan project, which began a couple of years ago. And it's going to move my slides for me. I'm going to do sort of the bulk of this presentation. I'm going to pull Paul in at the end to talk about sort of next steps in implementation. Um, as you mentioned, the materials in your packet were quite lengthy, uh, but that is because they include the full final draft of the plan in its entirety, which is a really huge milestone for us. Um, and my intent tonight is not to go through all of the content of that plan, but to give you an overview of what's in there. And I hope that you were able to have some time in the last couple of weeks to dig into the content that, you know, you're drawn to. So, um, you may have also seen our presentation that we did most recently for the public information session. This is kind of just an adapted version of that. So to get into it, we start with what is a comprehensive plan? I know you folks know this, but it's always a good refresher to remember that the comprehensive plan is a sort of standard plan that is governed by the Growth Management Act at the state of Maine. And it's something that the state asks all communities to complete every ten to fifteen years. And folks always sort of say, why do we have to do this sort of big, long process? Why does it have to include all of these things? And that's because the comprehensive plan is the plan that is intended to guide the community's policy decisions, zoning ordinance decisions, and all of, basically all of your operations for the next ten to fifteen years. And although the comprehensive plan does not create law, it is intended to be the back, the backbone of all of those decisions going forward, right? So a little overview of where we're at, which is basically the end, which is exciting, but just so you know what, how much has happened in the past couple of years. Um, we began work on the plan in sort of spring twenty twenty. That was the phase one, as the town council was calling it then, which included the, uh, the entire inventory draft, which is that background data piece, as well as the community input survey and hosting the focus groups. After that first year, we started what we called phase two, which was the goals, policies, and strategies development, and the future land use plan, kind of getting us to the point where we are now. Um, so those are really, the plan is sort of broken up into those two pieces, and we kind of broke up the process in those two pieces as well. Um, and I will get into what, what is sort of included in all of those. You can go ahead and ask. Um, but first I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the actual public engagement effort that went behind this plan. The, uh, this is an important part in terms of the state's perspective. It's an important part in ensuring that the recommendations that you are making are backed up by what your community wants, right? So we started the effort with a community survey. It was both online and hard copy. We got a really super awesome response, over eleven hundred folks, both hard copy. Um, we, I think six hundred of those were hard copy, which was really quite fun and quite the challenge to, to trans, uh, you know, transcribe. And, um, we got a really great response there. And after the inventory was completed, towards the end of that first year, we hosted the focus groups. And that was a more targeted effort where we invited, um, say like ten to fifteen folks who were more subject matter experts. So in our local economy section, you know, we had folks from the regional sort of ADD. We also had, um, business owners, local business owners at that conversation at that table. So that was intended to give the committee some place to begin when they started making their recommendations. And we got really great feedback and ideas from that too. Most recently, we hosted a public information session in early April. And part of that, um, effort was getting all of the final drafts uploaded to the website. And for those who were not able to join that meeting in person, we also have a recorded video of that presentation, which is on the website now. So all of that was available for like three weeks before the meeting. Um, and it all exists still now on your website. So that can kind of be an ongoing way for folks to engage as the process goes forward. And in part of that, where there is an open feedback form, which is, remains open on the website. So there's an opportunity for folks to get information to us if they see, see fit, you know? Um, we also went to the planning board and did a presentation and discussion there earlier this year. And like I said, all drafts are available. Um, the sort of the last required step of your public engagement is a formal public hearing, and that has to happen before you do your vote for adoption. That's part of the Growth Management Act requirement. So just so you know, you know, the public engagement is not done, there is still another opportunity for folks to engage. Um, so I want to do just a couple of slides about what is actually in the inventory. Um, not the findings of it necessarily, but so you know what it covers. Um, broadly, in broad strokes, there's conservation natural resources, land use zoning, as well as housing and how residential development is happening in your community, local economy, including the findings of your recent market analysis. Arts, recreation in downtown, so there are a fair amount of chapters sort of about the cultural resources of South Berwick. And then also covers public facilities and services, as well as a fiscal capacity chapter, which kind of digs into, you know, town finances even. So it really is quite broad and runs the gamut. Um, and each chapter, uh, we use the two thousand and seven plan as your base because this is an update. You have an existing comp plan, and we didn't want all the information in that to go unseen, right? So we pulled over all the information that was still relevant, updated what needed to be updated. Each chapter includes current conditions, lots of data, as well as the survey and focus groups takeaways and any past studies or current studies that the town is undertaking that are relevant. And, um, it, it, the data comes from many different places. A lot of it is public data from the state, and some of it is firsthand accounts from your municipal staff. Um, so it, it's, it's wide ranging. And the inventory chapter may mention some potential strategies or directions you might go, but it doesn't actually make those specific direct recommendations. All of those are in your part two, goals, policies, strategies. Good. Um, so speaking of part two, implementation is also made up of several sections. There are the goals, policies, and strategies, which I'll explain a bit in the next slide. Um, but then know that's sort of just a jargony term that is, uh, part of the planning requirements of this document. But it does make sense when you dig into it. There's also the future land use plan, which makes specific recommendations for your zoning ordinance going forward. An implementation plan, which talks about, you know, how are you actually going to do these strategies? And, um, how are you going to evaluate your progress over time? And then there's a regional coordinate coordination section, which is brief, but compiles all the places where the plan makes recommendations for collaborating with other communities or any other sort of regional level work. And so the goals, policies, and strategies, like I said, this term always sort of throws people off and understandably. But I try to use an example here to sort of illustrate what these tiers mean. All it really is, is a way to organize and, um, divvy up your recommendations. So the goals are overarching ideas. Each chapter uses the state goal, which is recommended by the Growth Management Act. And the example here, the goal is to plan for, finance, and develop an efficient system of public facilities and services to accommodate anticipated growth and economic development. Very broad, but that is the transportation goal from the state, you know, the Growth Management Act from the state. An example of a policy, these are more specific to South Berwick. And these are saying, you know, this is what the community is going to do or what we stand for to advance that, that policy, this, that goal. So the policy I use in example, it's the policy of the town to encourage walking and biking to the greatest extent possible for people of all ages as a means of reducing traffic, promoting sustainability, and increasing wellness. So this policy is saying specifically, we want to encourage walking and biking, right? So then the strategy is that action, the actual step that the community will take to encourage walking and biking. So for instance, in this, in this example, the strategy is to review existing street lighting throughout the community, improve lighting in high-traffic areas, um, then, and be consistent with neighborhood character, improving safety. So that's sort of a specific step the community could take to encourage walking and biking. So that's kind of how it's tiered out. Um, some, some chapters have a lot more policies than others, and usually that is a direct relation to how, um, we saw through the community survey and through committee discussions, how much the community cares about that topic. For instance, natural resources, definitely the longest goals, policies, and strategies section. Um, and that's because that's what we heard from folks. So go ahead. Um, I'm going to get a little bit more in the weeds here because the future land use plan is arguably one of the most important parts of the entire comprehensive plan. This is, uh, intended to be used as a guide for your planning board and town council going forward in turn, when you start making your zoning decisions. So the Growth Management Act requires that a community identify growth areas, rural areas, and critical rural areas. In order, growth areas are areas where you want to direct development. These are areas where your community is most suited for growth. And factors like public investment, public infrastructure, um, the current character of the community, all of those things go into that decision. Basically everywhere else is rural, and that's just kind of the nature of Maine, right? Is where you don't want to direct your growth are the areas you want to keep rural. Um, and those are places where growth will happen because we know people love to live in rural Maine, but it should be sort of minimized, right? We, we're trying to get most of the development to go to the growth areas. And then the last is critical rural areas, and those are your places where natural resources are present and where you want to discourage growth as much as possible. So to talk you through a little bit of the map exercise that we did here, um, your critical rural areas are based on the outline of your R-five zone, which is your most sort of restrictive of zones. And then the growth areas include your most flexible zones, as well as an area where we've sort of expanded down Route two thirty-six to include, um, some areas that are, you know, maybe sort of transitioning to growth over time, based on recommendations and your, your other plans. And then we added one area to, um, that what isn't necessarily required by the, uh, state, but transition to critical rural. And this was intended, you know, to balance, as we talk about expanding growth in the community, we also wanted to talk about expanding the areas where you are, um, you know, ensuring protections for your natural resources. So I'll talk a little bit about that light green sliver on the next slide. So, uh, because the, the math is sort of blobbish, right? It's like, these are sort of very general. In the actual narrative of the future land use plan, we talk about sort of specific focus areas where, um, we'd really like to see the town devote most of their energy in terms of this growth rural and kind of transition to rural, um, scheme. So under the growth areas, we talk both about Lower Main Street and the Pumpkin Town area on Route two thirty-six. Both of these were recommended as areas for growth in your market analysis, and we know Pumpkin Town has, um, been, you know, in terms of, it has a tip. It's been talked about as an area for future growth for a long time. And so we're hoping that these recommendations can start to move that forward, uh, more than it already has. You know, we have some great anchor businesses down there now. So, um, Lower Main Street, similarly, uh, has a lot of potential and I think is, you know, maybe a slightly underrated area of downtown, right? So we make recommendations for public investment or potential zoning changes, which could give it a little bit more of an edge in terms of future infill development, right? It's pretty built out, but it's underutilized to a certain extent. So we focus on both of those areas. And then in terms of the transition to cr- critical rural, like I mentioned earlier, there's sort of this sliver of R-three that abuts your R-five zone. And it has Warren Pond and Round Pond in it. It has little to no infrastructure. There are no roads that go through this area. And a large piece of it is already conserved. Actually, there are several different properties in there that are conserved. And so as a sort of question mark to the, to the town council and to the planning board going forward, if you, you know, feel the need to balance what might be increasing density downtown with, you know, increasing protections, this could be a good candidate area to sort of do the opposite, right? You could increase the minimum lot size in this area, maybe switch it from our, um, R-three to R-five, which, um, you know, would, you know, affect folks, but it might be a way in the future the town could think about sort of that balancing act. So that's the, that's the, in the weeds is I'll get with you guys tonight because I, I do want you to be familiar with that part of the plan. I think it is the part that the state will focus the most on too in their review. And I'm going to pass it off to Paul to talk a little bit about implementation. And, um, I do have some specifics from D A C F if you, if you want me to step into it. I can talk about that. Yeah. I'll be right.
Hi, everybody. Um, again, I'm Paul Schumacher, Director at S M P D C. So, I mean, the purpose of this plan, um, let's not forget, is not to adopt a, a plan. It's to adopt a plan and then implement a plan. I think far too many of these have been adopted, and then they sit on the shelf, and I know you've all heard that before. I think far too many of these have been adopted and then they sit on the shelf and I know you've all heard that before, but. Um, and I think even the, the, the plan prior to this one, it was well intentioned, but it basically sat on the shelf. So. Um, the plan is recommending a very specific implementation side of this, um, where the town council would be the lead responsible party. Um, but a, a point and implementation to committee to meet quarterly and track progress. Um, I think that's been suggested a number of times in a number of different towns we've worked for and sometimes it just falls off the table, but I really heart, we strongly. Urge you to consider keeping, starting that and keeping it going. Um, so then annually during the budget season, the town council and this committee would identify three to five priority actions per year. All the other plans had hundreds of things for you all to do. And if you got to four or five of them, you were doing well. So. This, I think we want to try to, it, it, you know, carve out as much as you can reasonably do. Um, a lot of these recommendations are zoning related. Um, but they're just not all zoning. I mean, a lot of plans very much focus on zoning. Zoning is a critical piece, like Reagan said, with the, with the future land use plan. And that probably should be one of the priorities, but there's a whole bunch of other stuff in there that is just not all, it's not all about regulatory stuff and zoning. Um, and then basically a report, uh, progress report, uh, annually, uh, which we could put in the annual report. So, um. You know, that's, that's something that I think really needs to be considered as you move forward. Uh, generally the next steps. Um, I think what we're looking for tonight is for a vote from you all to send it to the state. So. Um, I think we sort of, you, you all know that you, you decided that you wanted to be looked at by the state and determine whether it was consistent or not with the state law. Um, and we have tried to do that. Uh, we took a little extra time to do that. Um. And that would be uh, the next step to send it to them. They do a completeness review and then they do with determination of consistency. Um, the timeframe is, uh, we've been trying to get them. I think we actually listed on the site that. The, the queue in front of South Berwick as far as other comprehensive plans. I think they're thinking a couple of months.
Yeah, my guess is three to six, but I've just heard from them it's more like two and a little, so hopeful, yeah.
So um, that's sort of where we would like to go. And then they would send it back if they have uh, any questions. If there's issues about consistency, uh, they would send that back in a letter to the town, uh, which we would get as well. Um, and then he can ma- make any necessary changes. Um. And then I think as Reagan said, um, this is not the last stop on this, uh, since the odyssey. There's a public, you'd have to do a public hearing, um, that's required. Whatever we've done to date is not the official public hearing. Um, and then there would be a vote to adopt. So, um, everybody will have another crack at this. Um, but we do hope that people do, you know, it's a lot of stuff on the website. There's a lot to read and a lot to look at. But we do hope that people do take the time to, to do that on the website or look at Reagan's video. Um, and I, you know, certainly focus on goals, policies and strategies because that's uh, crucial. I mean, I, in closing, I mean, the last thing I'll say is that, um, you know, we're very aware of the downtown plan, the traffic light. Uh, the market analysis, the open space plan. Am I missing anything? You guys got it. Yeah, yes. So you got a ton going on and they are referenced within this document. Um, which, you know, the recommend, you know, they're, they're basically stated that, you know. Work, you know, adopt the recommendations of the downtown study, for instance. So we're trying to tie it all in with this document. Is that it? So any que- uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
I was gonna ask about the references to the other projects that sounds like that's in there. Um, when we do have to have a public hearing, can we get your assistance?
She spent, she spent two years on it. I don't, I.
I don't have any questions. I'm just excited that we have this really close to being done and that's a moment.
And I, we should point out some of the folks on the committee who've been, they're doing through the whole.
So I'll just read off. So the South River Comprehensive Plan Committee keeps with the Laura Lieber, Jeff Manster. Nora Gibson, Elita Galvin, Chris Harris, Jessica Fear, Jeff Manhattan and Reagan, all obviously were very involved. Thank you all for all of your support.
It was totally their plan. It's great for me.
Yeah, I do have one question. So as we are um, looking for this two month review of the state. Does anyone take any action on our recommendations that they have in that stance?
As far as the zoning, as far as the zoning side, um. I, I mean, I would recommend they hold on, but. You know, I think, you know, I mean, there's stuff that, I mean, if the planning board wants to start looking at their ordinance just for. You know, cosmetic changes or certain like, you know, minor stuff, administrative stuff. I mean, I can certainly, we didn't cover that in here. So.
We, we have had um, committees, you know, start looking at the recommendations and just not adopt things yet. You know, they think it, they could get primed. And, and think about what things they want to do first, that kind of thing.
Um, Chair, so yes, we're following this next upcoming budget, the budget is money. As a request of the tax phase to update our land use ordinance because they haven't been updated. Long time. We have a project in the plan going forward, get that status shortly after. So I would agree all hundred percent. I think they think it's a small thing, but they think we should wait. We'll probably find it next week.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, I don't think the timing, I think at first we were thinking three to six months. It's like, wow, that's a long way off, but maybe a little bit.
Yeah.
So, so once we get it back from the state, our next step is to get a public hearing, which usually need at least a couple of weeks notice. Um, on that, but I think, you know, depending on when. When it comes back, like is it, is it the right time in the middle of summer, for example, to do a public hearing, like, you know, I would look for.
Yeah.
When it comes back. I, I guess in the last week, both you guys have dealt with it before. Would that be, would you feel it'd be a rarity and wouldn't have any changes by the state?
I think it would be rare, yeah, that you get nothing. I mean, we come through that checklist, the committee come through too and um. But there, there may be, you know, I think it's pretty likely they find something. We just hope they're minor, right? And um. And I think we've done our best to, that we could to make sure that that's the case, but.
Right. So if you want to go back to meeting, go back to Reagan and the committee to, to see where exactly you'd have to address all the changes and how it's going to be done. And then you don't, you only want to take a completely project to the public.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be there weren't any changes.
Yeah. Very good, hopeful thinking. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go with that, yeah.
We have received some minor feedback on the public about the contents of this. Is it appropriate to address those? Prior to sending it to the state or wait for their.
If, if, it depends, I guess it would depend on the, the state of it. I did see a, a comment from the Don forwarded me. There was like sort of a, you know, very certain small error in the staffing of the fire department. That's an easy thing we can absolutely fix before it goes to the state. So I'd say send them my way and um. If there are things that would require committee conversation, I'd say let's wait until they can meet again, but. Um, you know, that kind of clerical error stuff, I'm happy to do before it goes to state and we can do that quickly.
Do you have a sentiment that we should address before we go to the center of the debate tonight? Or it was that one, that one comment that we've received so far. I know we've had a feedback forum.
There was one that was like, maybe the committee would want to talk about it. Um. But it was actually mostly in support with a question. So it'd be more like committee could discuss and respond kind of thing. I also think you could do like a vote with a condition that any other, you know, clerical errors I amend before we send.
Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you all for coming in. We'll um, go ahead and do our vote. I'll just go ahead and make a motion to send the draft comprehensive plan that was just presented. To the state for additional review.
I don't know if the motion, I've been real, I don't think they're left.
I was gonna say, yeah, consistency in the Growth Management Act might be like the.
Okay, agree. I'll make a motion to send the draft comprehensive um, report as presented this evening to the state. Um, to ensure that it provides with the growth and. Motion is that any. Um, to address any clerical errors, they can add to that, um, that we like to address any clerical errors. Um, and yeah. I wish that this was for zero. Paul, Reagan, thank you so much for coming today and all of your work on this. And the committee as well, sorry, I didn't mention you as well, um. Thank you. This is a really exciting time, I think, and um, coming to a close for this event, so. Alright, um. Is unfinished business? Not missing anything, oh. I'm all messed up with the. Okay, public comment. Anyone have anything they would like to address that's not on the agenda? You on the phone?
Okay, Chair, we got to be able to address uh, events last night.
The events of last night, the school budget, why would we address that here? This is the, this whole budget, the school district and the municipal budget are two completely separate, there's thirteen.
You, you won't be making any motions to accept the things that were going on last night at all?
I've met our heirs, sorry, I'll certify. Oh, there is, um, something on the agenda. It's uh, district, it's. It's been revised, it's still warrant in order of election. Um, I need that sign for, so I can hold the election. Uh, but to further give you information about the new school budget and the two budget, they are two separate entities. Um, we, we just want this from the election.
I just wanted to have comments about that, that's all. So whatever. So like, several of you were here last night, not here, at, at the, uh, at the high school. And um, it was probably the most corrupt thing I've ever seen in my life. Uh, amendments were made by myself to reduce the amount to last year's budgets. Uh, we appeared to have the vote. Before Tyan left. As soon as Tyan left. People started filing in the room like ridiculously. The first vote that we had to reduce the number. They said that we lost by two votes. I challenged the vote. And the challenge ended up, we lost by four votes. So we continued to move on. The amendment was denied. And then after that. We voted on the main motion, which is the way things should go. They won by eight votes. Then they won by ten votes, then they won by twenty votes, then they won by forty votes. Then they won by sixty votes. The last vote was over a hundred and twenty votes against my amendments. And I then made amendments to reduce the number every single time. Once Tyan left and once the clerk left for Elliot, it was an open door. People started filing in that place by eight or ten people at a time. It was the most corrupt thing I've ever seen in my life. I can't believe that anybody on this board. Would sign on to that type of corruption. You do have to understand that. When you see the tapes and the way you, you see how it all came down. Once our. Once our clerk left, it just went through the roof. The other thing was I felt as though the cops were called on us, on me. For even stepping up against all of this. And I suggest that the next time the cops are called. That they are posted at the door for when our clerks leave and they don't allow anybody else in the building. Because the additional sixty people that were allowed in that building were not vetted at all. Uh, I, and I fully plan to, but you guys are going to be wanting to certify all this. And I just want you to understand that your signature means something to the voters of this town. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Great, um, now if we want unfinished business, um. Number one, historic district ordinance question.
We brought up, we can bring an email that can send it to us, uh, by constituent. Mr. Manhattan, the Councilman Manhattan requested that we start to review the historic district ordinance. Uh, so the last meeting, we asked the town manager to reach out to Phil, see if we had the jurisdiction over it. Uh, it comes back that um. The extra bill that reduced historic district ordinance, if you don't see any provisions that outlines any requirement related to process for amendment. In my view, amendments can be initiated by the town council. Drafted by staff, but would be approved to have the historic district commission review to propose amendments and offer their comments and recommendations to the council. Again, that's in record, thought of what we had moving. Um, so. Unless Tim wants to add, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule workshop, like us, planning board. Historic committee, we just sit it out and roll the rest. So after, after doing this with the town attorney. Well, it wasn't offered and this historic district town only two members are in it. One just resigned, the last. But my recommendation, if you read it, the historic district ordinance. Um, it's like a lot of our other ordinances, it's, it's fall way behind. Um, the boundaries are set. Incorrectly, in some of the cases, we have lot splits that were never added. So my recommendation to council, if you're going to open this ordinance, then you should take the time to just do the whole thing as painful as it's going to be. Look at it and do it right. And that's probably going to take. Probably take, well, it's gonna take a couple of workshops anyway. We can offer some, because assessing has to be involved as well as. Um, the, the Phil didn't think the planning board really should, there's nothing really for the planning board, so. I'd like them there. If you want them there, that's your choice. Um, but it's. And I think they should be there and I obviously the historic commission, but just my point to the council is. That uh, the whole, the whole ordinance itself, I, I think you should just, if you're going to do it, do the whole ordinance. Uh, don't piece me up because you only have like the rest of our. We're, we're gonna have to go back to it anyway and finish it. And the lot splits, that's, so this. Red building over here was all redone because of the way the line was drawn and was accidentally locked out with chimney. So it's those things. You just, I would just recommend you do, just do a whole.
Yeah, I agree. If we're gonna touch it, we might as well make sure we're in good shape. Um, so yeah, the next quarter is, that we did the gold workshop with planning board and. Sort of district commission, um, whatever, there's availability, I guess. Or they probably wait in June.
I would wait till the last meeting in June or July.
Yeah.
Because in, in that interim, we could also look to see if anybody has any increases in joining the historic district.
That's true.
Commission to actually get more than two people on it, which might actually not. Yeah.
That's a plug for everyone here this evening that wants to join the historic district commission.
You don't have to live there to be part of it.
Okay, so um, was why I made a motion at least to move forward with that plan and then we can. I just tried working with planning and district, district commission for June, July, late June to July. Like six thirty works for everybody for completely, right?
I would almost say, um, yeah, to protection of the vintage of July, we really have to be seated and we're accepting applications. There's no way we're going to appoint people to this board by June. Um, so just thinking, pushing it back to.
July.
Okay, and understanding that we may have consistent finding that will donate less to the four.
Yeah, um, and then if we're gonna do July, I would say let's try to go last two weeks of July. Yeah, um, and then, if we're gonna do July, I would say let's try to go last two weeks of July, but. First.
It's a debate.
Uh, I was gonna say, um, so we need on the twenty-third of July, the planning board will have met on the Friday, if we want to say the twenty-four, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. Try that.
Uh, Chair, we have a town council workshop with the planning board and the members of the historic. Meeting here at town hall on July twenty-fourth at six thirty P M.
Second. Um, any other questions? All those favor say aye. Aye, John.
Aye.
Let us, aye, uh, I wish that this were a. All right, uh, I think there are unfinished business items number one, um. Item number two is beer and miracle award. Um, we're actually, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to table this item for next meeting, you just had a couple more submissions. So, uh, all this motion now to table, unfinished business number two to our next meeting on May twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all the favor say aye, that's kind of five.
One, five, five.
Aye. Okay, uh, new business number one, June eleventh is the date of the, uh, our next election for the school budget. Um, and that also reports that in the council meeting, given that everybody votes here, can't really have a campaign. What is the agenda feeling like? Do you think we should cancel?
Yeah, I think it's light. I don't see anything, I don't think in any way at the moment that it's gonna be. Critical, so.
Okay, and then change the next week weekend.
You can always add something.
Yeah. Um, okay, so I'll make a motion to cancel the June eleven, twenty twenty-four council meeting, um, due to a global election.
Second.
Thank you. Your motion is, I know this favor, I just got a, I done.
Aye.
Let us, aye, aye, wish that this were a. Yeah, I'm not getting to some administrative things, um, I mean, this is number two, so I wasn't at the last meeting, but we just had them term for being wrapped in.
Yeah, we, we, well, they were correct to the motion, they were, yeah.
Okay.
They were as written, but they were not correct.
Got it, okay. So we're going to correct that to the meeting, um, so regarding Mary, I mean, it needs to be updated to expire as, um. Sorry, it needs to be updated so that she is serving as an alternate until it term expires, and she's thirty. For that, well, that's what, that's what he's. I got it.
That's fair, I moved to make a motion. To rescind, you apply with the Mary husband to the planning board as an alternate with a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty seven.
All those favors, aye, John. I've done.
Aye.
Aye, aye, wish that this were a. And now, we'll be.
Mary husband, uh, Chair. And had moved to appoint Mary husband to the planning board as an alternate with a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty.
Second. And discussion, Mary, or sorry, from the state. Since that, that's it. Done.
Aye.
Let us, aye, aye.
I'm ready off the teleprompter, so I'm sorry about that.
It happened. Um, okay, and up next, number four, updating vehicle traffic ordinance, um, September one thirty, in September one thirty. Uh, Tim, I'm gonna let you run that one.
So the, um, back in May, the state posted the Bill where Elliot Bridge on. Number one oh one, down to thirty tons, uh, the under pilings are leak and failing and rotted. They notified us, they posted it, which now all the trucks that come out of. Pike's pit on two thirty-six after now to get to New Hampshire, come up two thirty-six to. Main street intersection, take a left across the bridge, and now they've been going. The fully loaded trucks, you know, good speed bumps are, are cutting through Liberty Street. And it's already starting to destroy Liberty Street, starting to cause massive cracks and tears in the road. Um, so Jay came to me and asked, I have the authority to post it temporarily, which I did, which is till, I think, June. Eleventh or June fifteenth or something. Um, so we do have the ability for you to change that and post it permanently. Um, so I'm asking you to post, do an ordinance change, to post it to twenty-three thousand pounds. And at the same time, to. Uh. The central school, we put up a lot, no left-hand turn sign, and leaving the school, the entrance right here. Uh, but we never added it to the ordinance. It does make a huge difference if you watch during the day, and school lot at two thirty. If everybody just keeps going this way, it's much safer than trying to cross two lanes of traffic. But we can't enforce it until it's in the ordinance, so I'm asking that be included in the ordinance so they can enforce.
Yeah, so, uh, in order to do this, we need to have a public hearing, you feel like it makes sense to do it ahead of our next, or at the very beginning of our council meeting, um. So I made a motion to, um, schedule a public hearing for the annual traffic ordinance. One thirty dash eight and one thirty dash thirteen to be held on May twenty eighth. At six thirty P M, third floor of town.
Sure.
Any decision?
Tim, I just have a quick question. Um, when it comes to oversized trucks driving on closed roads. If a citizen notices, who do they call to, to let somebody know that it's happening?
The police.
Okay, so. There are some roads that definitely have more oversized traffic. How responsive is our police department supposed to be? And I'm saying this as a shameless plug, we don't have enough officers to respond to every oversized truck, so. We're asking for.
Right, so currently, to answer your question, uh, Council Costello, you know, that's the problem with sick outs and. Uh, we have one officer right now filling in back at six weeks, so. We don't have enough officers, sometimes in the daytime, um, those calls will go out and lieutenant or the chief will take them, because the only officer on that we have is tied up on other calls. So, right now, we're down, that's the purpose of, we're asking for two officers, so that. During those times, we know all times, which are usually daytime operations, we're gonna put a traffic officer on. One of those new positions is gonna be a full-time traffic officer. So that would give us the ability to have someone in the car who could go to that area quickly and assess that and see if. That they're doing it, because generally, if there's one, there's more than one coming with it. Um, but right now, we don't have staff to. Handle, but, but, it's a hindrance, right? If, if they're not busy doing the call, and they're available to get there, but it'd be a lot easier if we had more staff. They do, you know, the police do do the best they can, but they're limited by staff. I, I will tell you that, uh, in the last two days, Dave Arsenal has been sitting on Liberty, at the entrance to Liberty Street, and. You know, curtailing anything coming down there, so he's been watching. So. When he can, you know, when he's not, not doing it, he's been sitting there. That's all I can give you for an answer.
And then just for clarification, it does not pertain to municipality trucks that would be delivering salt during the winter time?
No, no, so, so these are, uh, these are for commercial vehicles only. Commercial business, so fire trucks, town pod trucks, um, oil delivery trucks that have a specific delivery for that are all exempt. And, and just to follow up, there is, so it's like, for instance, if there was a delivery, they say they had to go deliver. You know, concrete or rafters to build a house, there's a process to do that, they just call Jay. And Jay can give them, what day are you going, what are you going, we give them a permit, and then they come get the permit and can go do it on by permit. So there is a process, even, you know, if somebody's having something done, they have every equipment, and there's a process to do it.
Yeah, okay, and other questions, concession? Um, okay, we have a motion on a field hall of hearing, all those favor, aye, just get a, aye, done.
Aye.
Let us, aye. Aye, wish that this were a. And, um, our last order of business now is the thirty-five more in the election, cut on this a little bit earlier. Um, see how long June eleven, twenty twenty-four, this is just a, um. An annual, the regular thing we have to do when we find an election is to be held, so, um. I will go ahead and motion to count on Warren in the collection for the upcoming school district, thirty-five budget allocation referendum on June eleven, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and second, any session? All those, okay, yes, fine.
Uh, so if I kind of sign in this document, um, we would be approving and agreeing with the context of this, this document. I do would like to ask a couple of questions, um, just so I can authenticate the document itself. Um. Uh, the meeting started at seven o'clock, I was just wondering how late our clerks were required to stay to check and register votes.
I actually, um, was not scheduled to be a ballot clerk, um, it was. Jump at me, um, but me being, I shouldn't, I'm all I care to say, because. My goal is to be checked in, um, I was told that I was. Released at the beginning of our meeting, which we realized approximately level, both. The five that was packing up along the, um. Um, the remaining ballot clerk, the ones who didn't begin with the rest. I'm not sure who the clerk, who the clerk provided us the word.
The two parts, sorry. The two parts that I checked in with, um, going into the meeting, we're still there at.
So then I have a concern, is according to main legislative statute title twenty dash A fourteen eighty-two dash V, annual budget meeting procedures number two. Appointing ballot clerks, the moderator shall appoint. From the certified voting list of the ballot clerks necessary for the efficient operation of the annual budget meeting. If the moderator sworn in the clerks before. He was officially elected as moderator, would this technically nullify the votes of the budget meeting?
I, I don't know that.
I don't know the answer to that question, and I. Don't. I, like. Is this even our jurisdiction?
So, it's not about the jurisdiction, it's about asking to sign a form that we agree with, so it's. With, um, yes, the election was a little chaotic and sometimes unclear voting process. The budget was adopted, I do understand. But was the process that got us there completely uncontestable and indisputable, I'm not putting.
I don't think that this is something the town council can even weigh, given that you and I are the only two there, we don't even have a forum of counselors to weigh in for this process.
But, well, I don't wanna sign it, I don't want power to sign the documents, and I said I don't completely agree.
Okay, and so now?
I'm just asking that the rest of you consider that there. There could be disputable items and encouraging not to sign that either.
They, they don't, I. I don't have a choice not to sign that. This is gonna go to the public for a vote, and all the meeting was wrong. Our school board meeting is wrong, whether I agree with it or not. Doesn't matter where I sit in the position I am at the town council. I have no control over what the school board does, the school board does not answer the, the school. That, they do not answer to us, they do not answer to the public, that is made very clear in every election, they answer back and say. They do not answer to the tax management, they made that clear every election. So, me sitting here, I am making the signature to validate that they can go to a vote. Not validating their budget, I'm not saying their budget numbers are good, I'm saying I agree with it, I'm saying that it's gonna go to a vote for the town itself. That's all my signature is saying, so I'm good in knowing that's what I'm signing. That's my personal view.
Tim, do you want to?
Yes, if I may, under the purpose of the document, under election laws, so. Under election laws, what this basically says is you're not agreeing with it because you have, so to agree with it, you, you have always the opportunity to come cash your vote. On the day of the vote, that's a true agreement. This is simply saying to the town council that you're the only one, I mean, there's still elected officials. They should be really, the only ones by main law who can authorize an election in here. So this is just giving our, and, uh, the school, if, school district number thirty-five. Then you're just authorizing them to hold a vote in town, whether. Well, vote yes or no, that's your choice, this is just simply. You, you're giving your authority to allow them to hold a vote, but really, it's what it's. You're not, by assigning this, you're not advocating that you support their budget.
Yeah.
You're, you're doing your job by law, law says that. The only, so let's say, for instance, that Robert decided to cast a vote, and said, I'm gonna set up a polling booth and have my own election. You can, but it doesn't mean anything, the only legal action recognized by the state name has to be called by the municipal officials in town. So, so for instance, that's why for any, um, like town meeting. Or any wouldn't change, we have to have a public hearing, then you have to have a public vote, we're the only ones to be called. But that's what really this is, and then the vote itself on June eleven is where you come and say, no, I don't agree with this, I said, I signed, no. I don't know if that helps clarify this way, but.
Um, I mean, my only concern is that, um, I'm not. I'm not questioning. The outcome of the vote, the, the voter's vote, I'm questioning. If it was actually adopted not under false pretenses, like, so by, by. Putting it up, I, if this is contested and affordable, which is a possibility, and if the outcome. I don't want my signature on a document.
This is just calling for an election, there's no, there's no number on here, this is just basically just saying, we are assigning this document so that the residents can come and pose their opinion. And you can do it at that point, too, we all can, voice our opinions on what the budget was, this is strictly just to make it so that people can do that.
So we, we just can't hold a vote, town.
And I totally need your questions to be answered tonight.
Without, you're operating.
Nor do I think that they're appropriate for the townhouse to be answering. Anything else?
I just feel, um, the, so question one, say, do you favor putting the M S A D verified budget for the upcoming school year that was adopted at the latest district budget meeting, it doesn't even specify, like. The date or time of such. Don't. But otherwise.
Well, so if this was contested for it, and it was overturned by a judge, then your decision, he was ruled. The judge rules the council, so, so, if the judge now awards this, your signature's gone. So unfortunately, with this, it's kind of a blanket thing, where you're signing to say, you can hold the election on our end. Um. I, I'm, I get as frustrated as every pretty office, when I don't, I don't have any say, you don't have to say, move. Now I gotta pay that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar check every month, just saying. Um, but I think that if this was contested and overturned, then, then, then no one voids any signatures or anything you did either.
So there would be no concern or liability or anything, again, this signature is just strictly calling for an election.
The, the liability, I don't think would be with us, because you are acting as a body of good faith.
Yeah.
Within the scope of your duties, so you're not negligent, and you're only doing what was put in front of you. And if you act in good faith on that, well, you, well, you actually know you're acting with faith, you can't be allied with this. If, if it goes forward, and you find out it's bad, school for this. You're just doing your job, you were asked to sign a warrant to hold.
So long story short, if I don't, um, capture sign this, then the optics of it would be that I don't want to give the voters the opportunity to vote on this in the June eleven election.
Possibly, but yeah, it's true.
The reason, the, 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 yeah, the reason of the warrant question is, in this document is because I, it's where it's giving me permission to run this election for them. I actively use the language that was produced to me, and this is the language that was voted on and produced to me, and will be on ballot. It's just giving me permission to do the, the vote, the, the whole election, if it's not paying me any, and. It's allowing me to hold their election for them, it's very similar, I think, in a way to the great works. Uh, uh, great works, then, that thing where we, we decided that the council would put on a warrant article that we need to get everyone's opportunity to vote on it. That's essentially this, but a valid election versus a, or, or. Man, there. Uh, we don't have a motion yet, right? Did you have any question?
No.
And, Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, uh, yeah, no, I have. Yeah, we're.
Oh, you did, I said.
Yeah, yeah, forget it, um, okay, go ahead and take a vote on that, then, um. All those here, aye, aye, done.
Aye.
Let us, aye, aye, wish that this were a. Okay, that wraps up all of our business for the evening, I'll let Tim and Jen to listen, I'm gonna go on.
Just for the record, I, there, I, I will say that I don't, I take the nose so, election. Probably could have backed it in jail. Could have, could have been much, I wouldn't center it. But I end up now with choice when we get it from the school. We don't, it's like everything else in school. Don't have a choice. Just like.
Um, just to touch on that, the language phrase of it, um, Wendy from Elliot and I both said the same thing, it was very vague. And we did question it, and we were told that this is both the school lawyer approved and wants in the question going forward. It has changed from previous. But present that was what it said.
Hey, great. Um, on the high line, they finished protecting the legend of gravel on a thorough road. They've installed the pelvis and the ditch lines. Working on finishing that. We cleaned the Black Spirit Cemetery, which is a PMR, in the plains for, for the American. From the stones, from mowing the fields and the islands, uh, two guys that have been hired to do that. Kevin and Joe, they're doing a wonderful job. The stormwater folks for the highway department inspected all the tech basins. Um, installed new toilet area town office and was lit game last week and fixed that, and they've been working on road patching. Police department had seven arrests, three accidents, a hundred fifty-one traffic stops. Um, received compliments of Officer O'Brien and Officer, um, Alicio for their work with mental health calls. They received a thank you letter from the professor in town, or Officer O'Brien, for being extremely professional and empathetic during a rescue call that he was involved with. Bike department had twenty calls in the last two weeks, yet today the hundred and eighty-nine calls. Uh, on Thursday, five nine, they responded to a building fire in Pumpkin Town Road. There was condos out back, the fire started when nobody was home, and we discovered, and the homeowner returned to find a house that was sold. Fire mostly burned itself out to the last block, and it was smaller when it was discovered. The whole house received seventy, seventy-six heat, smoke damage to all residents. No one was injured. Uh, one dog did perish, and I wanna, I went to the call, I wanna give my compliments to the fire department. I watched him do CPR on the dog for over thirty minutes. And one of the animals tenants and one of the firefighters took the dog and transported it to the emergency hospital, uh, down enforcement, but the norveil didn't survive. So again, you know, an opportunity where our service in our town, they go above the, they didn't have to do that. Vote enforcement had sixteen building permits, issued five funding permits. They've done twenty inspections, uh, proved two minor home occupations. They're working on two active violations, one potential violation under investigation. Uh, they had nineteen in-office meetings, and they're working on redressing roads, um, which is currently happening. They're sending out letters. They're starting, they're working on twelve rows at a time, and so the E nine one, because the addresses weren't given out right for open years. And they, they're mixed up and they coincide. So, uh, the state, there's a requirement by the state to make sure that all the roads are aligned to safety. So we've, a lot of our roads are screwed up. People put numbers on, so we're going through to change that. Um, planning, May fifteenth, there'll be a meeting for the, the minutes approval introduction of two new planning board members that we just appointed. Planning board is now full for the first time. Um, there's a major hallmark fiction automotive service in front of the planning board, and that's it.
At the library, we have a few events coming up on June twelve. Summer meeting kicks off, and we'll have musical guests, like Shane Planners, there from one to three. On June twenty-seven, Lindsay will be there with her puppet pals from three to four. And on July twenty-fourth, uh, Wild encounters will be there for tiny, tiny creatures from three to four. In recreation, they are halfway through the Peewee Spring Soccer Club, which was filled with thirty-four children, but also a waitlist about a dozen daughters. This was the first time operating this spring soccer to four or five-year-olds, and it's been a huge success. The seniors enjoyed a Cinco de Mayo lunch on May first, and tomorrow they will be enjoying a Mother's Day lunch. In assessing, Berna is working on permit pass, which is a review of the permits issued throughout the year and the works completed within the properties. This is nearly complete, and most of the data entry is also complete. The next piece that she'll be doing is sales review, after the permit pass is complete, and looking at all the sales that have occurred from July first to twenty twenty-two through current, and values will be updated per state requirements. In the town clerk's office, they started to issue absentee ballots today for the change of action. And on Thursday, the twenty-third, the office will be closed for maintenance. At the transfer station, we get it swapped out, the updated permit takes. And they are performing maintenance on the plastic conveyor belt as the rubber is rotted and stuck to being developed off the turn. The downtown revitalization public workshop is this Thursday, here in this room at six o'clock. In my area finance, HR, I have had twenty-four business meetings, thirty-two staff meetings. The thirty-day notices have been sent out by certified mail on May seventh to eighty-five property owners with outstanding balances with twenty-four taxes. The deadline for payment is on June sixth, and the names will be reported on the registry on June eleventh if the taxes are still remaining unpaid. The number of thirty-day notices sent out this year was five less than the previous year. Sending that is this week for personal property accounts with outstanding balances for the twenty twenty-four tax year, as well as any other tax year that may remain unpaid. And there's roughly about twenty accounts outstanding. We are still working diligently with ABP to get it set up and trade. We have a live date of June third. Jenny and I have been working very closely with Kimo. Um, we have two storms right now that we're working on, the January planning storm, which is the ninth through thirteen, that, um, we have some erosion, um, Hoover stands road, and that is going to commit up two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to its back. The April wizard on the fourth, that was mostly for tree cleanup and locking up roads during that storm, and that has a total of about seventy-two thousand. I have been meeting with all the department heads on their fiscal twenty-four budget coming to an end already. And we can show that they're gonna end on a good note. And this Thursday, we found an interview with a library page that should have started with the name of the town.
Um, so for myself, I've had fourteen business meetings, thirty-seven staff meetings. Remember those, all points associates for the initial floor plan discussion, some updates. Been working with Pete, answering some questions on logistics of utilities and entrances and stuff like that. Uh, several phone calls, town attorney referencing both personnel issues, land use ordinance issues. Uh, and some, and some contract stuff. Uh, we've done the department labor required annual clear training completed for, uh, all the departments. Which is the annual training for all mud and wind actions, add with the stop and all that stuff. Uh, I'm gonna do one more makeup session. We have about eight people with necessary purposes. Um, now the two citizens, one in reference to a positive event, one playing a, a truck with heavy loads or maximum load, spilling their load on the side of the road. And we, I sent public works out, we cleaned up the side of the road, and I asked police to sit in that area and see if they can slow down the heavy trucks. Because they're going too fast around the corner and still no load, and this guy is upset, so. Bear that. Um, customer service survey, we've had, uh, the library had three that said they were, they were excellent. Town clerk has one that said they were excellent. Transport station had two that said they were excellent. Vote enforcement had three that said Jenny was excellent. Uh, one from Virginia was excellent. I attended the town school monthly managers, myself and Jen, last Wednesday. Um, so interestingly enough, we asked about their budget. Kind of tried to get a, I was curious to, to answer questions for the public, specifically what were their major increases. Um, and they basically said it was employee wages, what they were talking about to us. Um, that, so what they said was, well, what's happened is, uh, the state has required that the lowest paid employees of the school have to walk in about beyond so much percent of the minimum rate. That puts them on that. So then everybody else had to bump up from there. So that's kind of what I got out of it. Was there anything?
Health insurance was another big expense with school.
Yeah, the health insurance. That, that's all, that's what I've been. So. Um, I attended the York County Monthly Managers Association meeting by Zoom. Lot of discussion, um, it was a good meeting, a lot of discussion around local towns developing our own ordinance for tax stabilization. Within our own. So I, I sincerely think I agree a hundred percent, and I'm gonna start working with some other towns to look into it. It may take me a while to get it, something draft and put together, but I think we've come to a place where, you know, I've met with some citizens who, not a lot, but I've met with two or three citizens. Um, who are having financial hard times, and they need some, some way to pray relief. And I, I know the state took a stab at it. Didn't kind of work, and they said they gotta stay program. But I think if we could do it, try to find a way to do it at a local level, by when it's, it might be, it would be beneficial to us. So there's four or five managers that all find on the same handbag. And I think we're gonna look after. Um, fiscal twenty-four year budget, last quarter budget review, myself and Jenna doing that, and dealing with two employee issues. And I just wanna say that it's, it's funny and strange in places that you meet old friends and old people, but I met an old friend here tonight that I, Rob Burnham. Everybody know Rob. I, I grew up with Rob, he was a year ahead of me in high school. Everybody loved him. They thought he was one of the best-looking guys in school. Don't know what happened to Rob. Uh, but, uh, Jim was on the bike about, I was being left quick, and I got my shot, he got his shot. We fought a lot of fires together, and it wasn't until tonight that he came in and said, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm burning, yeah. So good old homies, and good to see an old face, uh, by all means. Oh, yeah. So beyond that, I just, I, I just wanna tell you, I had a, we sent out our win notices, and I had an elderly lady come in. She was really upset, and she was really scared, we're gonna take our house. Now I want the public to understand and know that there are laws that we have to do, like win notices. And eighteen months later, the voters and the processes to go through. But I also want the public to know, and everybody to know. The, the best way to answer that at the moment is come talk to us. We have the ability to be flexible for that, we have the ability to work with the taxpayers, and they payment plans and do all kinds of things. Be very creative. And I can tell you that I've dealt with seven or four voters in my tenure as a manager, not here, but in the public communities. And I've never once evicted anybody from their property. And we're not in that business, and we're not gonna do that, and we don't wanna do it. So I just want me publicly know tonight, and I know the council supports this as well, that though we have to do that process, we're not in a business of taking people out of their homes. And we don't want, we wanna work with everything. So I just wanna make that known, where we, we work with our taxpayers. I know she was very excited. She felt better when she left. You know, you know, and hopefully we can, you know, and I'll tell you, one of the big things that Kate now doing, she has been other than pay her car. For sure, fact, she knows any of the food. She didn't know the staff, and then we came in, and I realize not everybody can. But I told her, I said, reach out, I'm not a person to, talk to me. And what she finally did, Miss Paul initiated by, uh, Representative Roberts over the weekend, I said, when, you know, when she finally did, she left, I didn't, you know, and then, anyway, just do the best you can. We'll, we'll make the work some more. That's it. That was all I have.
Thank you. I have another question. Is there anything? Comment, comment. Actually, I have a, so, uh, you mentioned other communities, have you, like, are a similar size to us, but we're interested in this?
Yeah, if you're a county, other communities, you're a county. I think, so there is a draft model out there. Um, so we're gonna grab that draft model, with the companies already doing it. We're gonna see how it would fit, because, so it involved freezing, just like the FAD programs, the elderly freezing their, your taxes at a certain level. But then we gotta talk about the compensation of when we lose that, how much is back, and how do we compensate for that? So I gotta, you just gotta do some research. I think, I hope it's viable. Somebody else is.
Do you know if it's been court tested or anything yet?
Yeah, oh, it's been, been court tested. Um, it, it's been in place. It's a tax really program for the elderly. I'm trying to think right in my head, who has it?
Elliot, that one.
Elliot, that one. Okay. Oh, it's going away this year, Elliot. It is, yeah, 'cause I'm often dealing with that, right? With that in mind. But some, some other town, somewhere, when I was in town, looked down, I was in Harris, somebody around me had one. It was a bigger community, so I'm gonna try to reach out and find it there. All I have.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor, Councilor, comment.
Spanish schools twenty-ninth annual hyper history is this Monday. Very much forward to that. And it's great to hear a town manager, color, um, engaging regionally, by working with the or county manager, sitting in the hump of students. On the first, I attended, um, a tax and security area comprehensive transportation system meeting as a public participant. Just so residents are aware, we have staff that sits in on those meetings regularly, but they are open to the public. So I took myself on it just to see what's going on. And that's because I really care about traffic quality and butter to two thirty-six, that was in the downtown area. And I felt as though our voices needed to be amplified at a regional level. Um, so I encourage everyone to think regionally, uh, you know, definitely check into the county commissioner. Maybe, uh, in Alfred, it's the first and third Wednesday of every month at four three, may or your.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Uh, Jessica, since you mentioned the hyper history, can you please dispel a rumor that I heard? Are they not doing it in town anymore? Is it moving to Hamilton House in Bonswell? The bomber, I know, the highlight of, some of our citizens was enjoying watching the students walking through downtown and with the older students participating in the function, so I'm really kind of bummed about that. Um, and the other PSA is a reminder for, um, the hunters to please forget to, um, enter your, into the main news lottery. The deadline is tomorrow to improve my chances for being, well, thank you.
And you're, you're gonna. Well, then I'm good.
Okay. Um, and then for me, the only thing, um, and this really, I, I am, um, we do have, uh, that's good to imagine for you, you're seated up. So it's dates, um, July twenty-ninth is when, um, election papers are being taken out for the twenty twenty-four election. I don't remember, what's up with the school board? How many? One B?
Um, it's one B.
So one B on school or one B on the council will be open in the fall. Forms available seven twenty-nine, and they're due back to me on September sixth. That's all I have. Thank you. Um, we, the council doesn't need to go into executive session, um, so we will make that motion at a moment. And then we'll adjourn the meeting after we wrap up. So, uh, we'll go, we'll check that everyone needs the whole. Thank you all for coming. I made a motion to, to four or five today to go into executive session to discuss personal, personnel matters. A motion, a second, okay Rebecca?
Hi.
John. Let us, hi. On a moment.